Everybody here that's gonna be there?
Yep.
So, if we bring a quorum, we call the meeting to order. We just have a brief scheduling comment. There's been some activity on the marijuana potential agreement. And so that, it is anyway, on the agenda for our next regular meeting. And what we moved up on the conversation list, but John just wanted to make a comment or two about that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go into detail here, but it's interesting. As you all know, this is a rapidly evolving area with guidelines being clarified, published, and so on and so forth. And indeed, our council is engaged in constantly adapting. There have been changes in guidelines, and they're gonna be sort of three steps, I think, to going through this. One is gonna be talking about the fees, another is gonna be talking about guarantees, and another will be to approve it so that it can go off, and their council can fill in some of the stuff, doing L-square footage and so on, which is apparently normal. The most important headline, and I'll leave this as a headline, is, I have been saying, on the basis of what I've been hearing from council, that this community impact fee cannot be spent on anything other than things that are direct impact. That is true, but what has been happening is there have been an increasing number of agreements that include a community impact fee and a community benefit payment, which is a contractual relationship between us and them, but does not affect their licensing at all. And that there's a provision for costs and reimbursements and charitable contributions. So when we talk, I've already had some conversations, both with Bob Patton and with the Hamilton Selectman, who's in a similar position, and with our attorney. And I'll fill you in, but we have a slightly different scenario than we did before. And it may be better for the town financially.
To the benefit.
That's it for now.
Question? Will you entertain a question?
Oh, yeah.
In your opinion, is that in addition to the amount of money that you would be seeking for, that we talked about earlier, the two or two and a half percent?
Well, what I think we might do is, an approach, which has occurred to me, but it is not the only one, but I wondered whether, instead of doing a percent and a half, maybe it's one percent on the community impact and one percent on community benefits, which then, what I did not realize and did not know, is the community benefit fee rolls directly into the general fund. Needless to say, flexibility point of view, that's great. If there's plenty to spend, it's a community impact fee on, that is required by state law, but the other is not. So, we'll fill that in, I'll have more of a conversation in detail when we speak.
So terminology wise, it's two things, community impact fee, community benefit fee. Is that just the purpose of the topic about it?
Yeah, community impact fee, community benefit payment, which is not a fee, they call it a payment.
Yeah.
Then there's cost and reimbursements, which are sometimes separated out, legal costs and stuff, and charitable contributions are sometimes in here too, so we'll talk about that. I have some thoughts on where we might go with that, but I'd like to present the issues first and talk about them collectively, rather than...
Thank you for the time that you're spending on this. I'm keeping us literally up to the moment in a...
I appreciate that.
Ahead of the curve, it's so important, it's great. Okay. Notice of inclination to reappoint the town administrator. So, let me take a moment to sort of set the scene for what we're trying to do. So I have in my hand, and I think everybody else has in their packet, the existing executed contract between the town and our current town administrator. I've done this before, but I'm gonna go through it again, because I think it's so important. My humble opinion, this is a legally binding contract, and not that there isn't some room at certain steps, there certainly is, for us to determine our process, but I think we're bound to follow this as essentially the roadmap. So it goes like this, and I'm not interpreting, I'm excerpting, but I'm not interpreting. So the term of the contract, the current contract expires June 30th, 2019. So stating the obvious, about a year from now. The next relevant paragraph to me is Section 2, which is on the top of Page 2, which is very important. First clause, the board shall give notice of whether or not it is inclined to reappoint the town administrator for another term, not later than nine months before the end of this agreement. I think we all, the last minute, took out our phones or our calculators and figured out that that was September 30th. Correct?
Yeah, correct.
All right, okay. That's what we're gonna come back to, particularly in a moment, but I wanna go through the track. Because there is a relatively coherent flow here. So that's a separate provision. Then, next, just following it right along, if at the end of the term, neither a successor agreement has been signed, nor a final notice that she will not be reappointed received by the town administrator, she may remain in office on a temporary basis, with the mutual consent of both parties, and under the terms and conditions of this agreement. So, in any way, hoping that we reached that point, but it is contemplated, and it is allowed, as long as we follow the steps, it is possible for continuation, if it's by mutual agreement by the parties. Then I go to Page 7. I wanna be clear that there is a distinction here. And this details the annual performance review. It is distinct from notice of inclination to reappoint. That's I guess the point of it. Section 14, Page 7. Annually, with the advice of the town administrator, the board shall define goals and objectives, which they, meaning the board, determine necessary for the proper operation of the town, and the attainment of the board's policy objectives. Said goals and objectives shall be in writing, they shall be generally attainable, reverse words, I don't intend to, within the time limit specified, and within the annual operating and capital budgets appropriations provided by the town. We also have that on today's agenda, to at least talk about how we're gonna do that, and maybe to even do some of it. Then, the board shall review and evaluate the town administrator annually. Said review and evaluation shall be based on a forementioned goals and objectives. Further, the board shall provide the town administrator with a written summary statement of the evaluation findings. The board shall provide an adequate opportunity for the town administrator to discuss her evaluation with the board. So again, I have certainly excerpted, but I hope it's helpful, I think those are the related paragraphs. We have, at a prior meeting, I believe, acknowledged that the board did not accomplish the establishment of goals and objectives last year, and they would have formed the basis for this particular evaluation. So if we do it, and just trying to put things on a timeline, my reading of this is, if we do it now or soon, that would allow for an evaluation at the end of the fiscal year. I think that's the constrict. So, with that as background, the first formal item, I don't wanna use the word formal, the first discussion item on today's agenda is this inclination to reappoint. And so again, I'm just sharing the way I look at it, of course, every one of you can look at it differently, but to me, that relates particularly to the first sentence in Section 2, Page 2. It is not a component of an evaluation. I think it's easier, and if it's not, I apologize, I think it's easier for me to just be upfront about my take on this, and then we can see if people have a different take. To me, this is a relatively straightforward, very preliminary step in the process. To me, this is something that I would hope the board will do without a lot of angst, and that it essentially is the front door, it opens the process that I'm just going through. So again, what I'm trying to do right now, I'm not looking for motions or any such thing, it's a working session, but I'd like us to discuss whether or not other board members agree with that approach whereby we would, without going through an elaborate process, send that notice, which would then, well, I just wanna tell you, I saw an idea from you, which then would follow up with those things. Kelly?
With respect to the board's conversation, I fully realize this is an open public meeting, that's also being recorded, but out of respect for the board, I'd be happy to step out of the meeting, so you can have a frank discussion, if that's what you so choose. I completely respect the board's ability to have a frank and honest conversation about the topic. So, I would just sort of offer that. I don't, I don't know either way if there's, I think that I just threw the chair, wanted to offer that opportunity. I'm happy to step out, if the board feels that that would be most appropriate, for you to have a good frank conversation.
I have, just personally, in preparation for the meeting, I won't pick a random number out of the universe, but I, not the first time, reread sections of the guide on the open meeting law relative to evaluations. I also, maybe, almost finally understand the Supreme Judicial Court's opinion on why they believe that Board of Selectmen and Whalen strayed from the open meeting law in the way that they handled the town administrator's evaluation, which again, is a step we're going to undertake, but I'll only comment by saying, the way they went astray, according to the SJC, was to follow the Attorney General's guide, which then the SJC disagreed with. If anybody's interested, or quickly, but I went from the Worcester Telegrams abstract of it to the actual case, which is really much more informative, if anyone's interested. Welcome to the conference.
Would you summarize it as more to follow?
Say it again?
Would you summarize it as more to follow?
I haven't much left.
Since there appears to be a disconnect between the Attorney General and the SJC.
Well, the Attorney General's opinion has been revised, not in accordance with the SJC.
It has been.
Oh, yeah. The SJC is the boss.
That's a point, that's a point to follow.
Well, I said, it's either moot or has been revised, but you gotta follow the SJC and the boss. So it brings back to, so to your, so clearly, when we proceed, it's allowable, under executive session, to talk about negotiations with nonrepresented personnel. It's allowable to talk about, not that we ever will, but if we need to talk about character. But unless you have a different take, we don't get the evaluation, it's gotta be...
In an open session.
In an open session. So, only speaking for myself, I don't have any reason for you not to be here, unless you do. I mean, I would respect, if you want to step out, I certainly would respect that, but I'm not a person. Whether you stay or go is a nice gesture.
I mean, that's the...
I don't mean whether we hire you or not.
Well, the point of the contract is, is that the board has the right to do what it needs to do, but I respect your ability to have an honest opinion.
Appreciate that. So again, to the degree that's appropriate, it's here, I'm just trying to organize the conversation, and hope that we can talk about the first step, which is the inclination to reappoint, or the other steps as I... You here?
Yeah, I'll put mine out there. I think that we should, I've lost my note on the agenda here, I think we probably should indicate our intention to reappoint. To my perspective, as I understand the information available, that this, to me, seems a little perfunctory, because as we have been growing into our relationship with town administrator, who is an important part of our process, one of the things that has lagged behind is a clear and robust process for discussing performance goals, metrics, timelines, all those sorts of things. And the fact that we failed to do that, my sense is that there's a lot of impressions, but a dearth of clear information. This was something that we negotiated, that you would do, and yes, you did it, or you didn't, you did a great job, or you're almost, whatever. And in my view, that, out of fairness to you and any incumbent in a position like yours, that I put it at the very top of my list of priorities, is to work with the town administrator to set goals and expectations for 2019. At that point, we could have a very substantive conversation, based on things that we do. But right now, I'm not sure if you know what we measure you on, 'cause I'm not sure if we know what we measure you on.
I feel the same way. I think we were, we've been negligent in not going through the evaluation process, not setting goals and guidelines. And that's an important tool, to be able to do that, in my opinion. Now, having said all that, I hate evaluations. I've never seen anything good come out of them, because somebody always winds up being upset. Either the boss or the employee winds up being upset, okay? And it always has created bad blood, in my opinion. But nevertheless, I think we need to move forward with the goals and objectives, and these five documents that I have right here are well on the way to doing that, and that gives us a guideline for doing a proper performance evaluation.
And I would say, I worked many years as a HR consultant, developing HR performance evaluation systems and other kinds of things, stuff of that nature. And, yeah, I think they're easy to misunderstand, easy to misuse, and easy to be taken the wrong way. I think when done properly, the primary goal is, you want to give an employee every opportunity to do their best. And some of that is a negotiation of what kind of support is necessary. And, like, if I say, I want you to run a three-minute mile in 2019, we should have negotiation, you'd say, how does eight minutes sound, or 10 minutes, or whatever, or do I have to run a mile, can I walk 100 yards? But that's a negotiation that helps you understand our expectations. The second thing is, I do believe it can be positive, because my very strong belief is, if we have an effective conversation, you would be more comfortable knowing, this is what they're looking for. Not every little detail is gonna make you as comfortable as some of the other ones, there may be some, you sort of feel, they're really kind of pushing my limits on this, because we may feel that's an area for growth in the position, and you would adopt into it. But I think it puts all of us on a much better basis for having a conversation when the time comes. So, I, my experience, Boyd, is that you gotta set it up, but that it can and should be ultimately positive, so that you know where you're going. It's like a map.
Frequently, my opinion, frequently, an employee looks upon a performance evaluation as a lynching. And they're scared.
And it should not be...
And it could be a tool for letting that person perform better. It should provide a roadmap for that employee to know where it has to go, to make a better decision.
Part of what I think happens in this is, not only do we get better town administration if we set appropriate performance goals and guidelines and so on, and expectations, we actually are providing a service in supporting that employee for either continuation in this job with higher expectations, or if it turns out that there are other opportunities, we've done a good thing. By the way, that gets around, that we're supported that way. The third thing is, as a town, we will learn more about what the town administrator's challenges, resources, and so on, are by having this conversation, so that we get better at being your bosses, if you will. And that's a skill that, as I think you put very clearly, Boyd, we've been a little negligent on. So, this is a benefit for us, frankly, as much as you.
So particularly relative to the issuance of the inclination, either Mr. ...
No, I think it's hard to be talking about. I think you're talking that there really are two sorts of things going on here. One of them is, what's our plan going forward, based on the agreement that we have with Kelly, as to performance and goals and things like that? And that certainly makes sense, we have a responsibility, based on this contract, regardless of what we say relative to continuing nine months before, whatever, to, for the coming year, to have our goals clearly laid out, and work for them. The second thing then, I think, is, and I think it's separate, is essentially to provide this position on, at this point, how we feel about reappointment. Then there's a whole discussion, and I certainly agree with you, that sitting down and trying to do the evaluations can be a problem, but one of the main things that goes on for an evaluation is not that one time in the year that you sit down and do an evaluation. Essentially, there should be no surprise at an evaluation, in the sense that along the way, employees understand, that work for you, understand what they're doing well, what they need to work on, and it all comes together when you do that. Now, maybe that's too ideal, but that's the way it should be, and so, certain people certainly may feel uncomfortable at one point or another in an evaluation, but it should not be essentially any surprise to anyone, it should be obvious what it was. In the case of goals, and I certainly agree with you on doing the goals, but maybe that we need a definition of a goal as...
I'm gonna interrupt you, but that'll be under Roman numeral two. And if you want, I don't know what we're gonna do, but I'm looking for a sense of comfort, not as molten, but with us, a sense of general agreement that, this is, did you use the word perfunctory?
Yes.
I think, I like that word, that this is a relatively perfunctory step. Do you have further comment on that?
But in that regard, then, in regard to a reappointment, it has to do with the ongoing functioning of the town, and the administrator's role in doing that. And to say that, based on what we as individuals, and then voted on at some point, see as the job is being done, is that the way we want to see the job done? And I really, I certainly do like to be very positive in the way I deal with things. And this has been somewhat of a challenge for me, but I put some effort into it, to try to understand this. So I'm going to read the words that I have here, and I'd ask that they be entered into the minutes also. But this would be my way of thinking about whether I would be comfortable with a reappointment. The town administrator worked products and judgments influencing reappointment in 2009, and some examples. So this is work products and judgments. One...
Okay, I'm gonna pause for a second, I think I'm well within, within my role as chair, is doing this, this is a process comment. So what I was looking for, was whether or not we are in agreement that this is a relatively perfunctory step. So what I'm hearing from you, is that you are not in agreement with that, and that you feel that at some point, you want to get into substantive comments prior to or during the vote on your... Is that a correct interpretation?
That's correct. But that would be then my evaluation of what's perfunctory, meaning it's a rubber stamp? Is that perfunctory?
No, I don't think that's fair, that it's an administrative step that does it, that that's why I took the time to lay out the other steps.
Thank you.
That would be another point where we would get into, that once, that this is, I'm not trying to be too poetic here, but this essentially opens the door, begins the process. I'm not trying to cut off what you want to do, but rather to organize it.
Okay.
So, so, so I'm not, I don't believe substantive criticism, that's with a small c, is appropriate at this moment in the process. And again, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. I'm interpreting your having a whole piece of paper there as that, that you want the opportunity to go into some detail relative to whether or not we should reappoint.
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
I'm just gonna hold it right there, for that, okay?
Okay.
That is, I don't, I think I'm within my role as a chair, that this isn't the moment to do that, the moment will come.
But I can, but I can, and because I talked about it, I will provide this as...
It's a public document.
As, yeah, it's public document.
What you're looking for tonight is just a sense of order.
A sense.
Yes, yes. So I've gotten a sense from everybody, you don't need to give me a sense if you don't want to, but now would be the time for you to have it.
Sure, I would just say that in the past, in a manager role, whenever I had to do an appraisal, or even think about whether or not you were keeping someone on or not, it would be based upon some agreement of what they were expected to do, and how they did it. And since I wasn't here last year, or the year before, because many goals span the time, especially if it's a new position, that I'm in no way in a position to say whether or not I would be inclined to or not, because I don't have the background, so I would abstain from that.
Okay, so this is what I'm gonna do, if the other members object, you can let me know, I'm sure you will. I am going to request, also, I think, the other thing that's happening is that, for lack of a better phrase, the definition of what we do at work sessions, and what we do at regular means is evolving. And I want to respect that. I know at the moment, the regular means are not live televised, but they will be. So I don't want anybody to... I'm hoping that folks will see that the work session discussion was about the process. So I will request, Debbie, please, to put on our agenda for the regular session, what I hope will become a motion to give this notice. And please mimic the wording. And not to be overly formal, but once the motion is made and seconded, I certainly will entertain you coming back with this.
Sure.
And anybody else saying anything that they want to do. All right? Okay, thank you, I appreciate you, it is, hopefully it is enough that time, and... Well, my sense is that we should move forward with this, in due course. In form, the town administrator, it is my intention to reappoint her. Since we didn't have goals and objectives established, since we didn't do a proper evaluation, I think it'd be pretty unfair to not reappoint her. If we really thought she was doing a bad job, we would have told her some time ago, she better go looking for a job. And we haven't done that, okay? And that's part of the reason this is, that's in the contract, by principle. So put that up towards the top of the agenda, if we can, and I think it would be new. And thank you. The second thing we have for today, and I, we have a couple of, in terms of time, smaller things afterwards, but this was the primary matter for us getting together this afternoon. And I'm certainly open to either Professor Spencer, am I right, or anybody else jumping in, in terms of facilitating and process, and I don't have a magic way to do this, but I hope that we work together well enough to be somewhat informal in what I'm talking about. I think this makes sense. I'm gonna ask us, I mean, it's no roll call voting, I'm gonna ask us one at a time to read our proposed goals, so we all just have a sense of what's floating around. For this, again, I'm not trying to be overly controlling, but I'll ask, just kind of, you know, not necessarily the word for word, and not the objectives under the goals, but just kind of like the topics of the goals. So, I'll go first, if that helps, I'll go to the last of some of the...
You keep the format.
So, here are mine, it's somewhat in order, but, and again, I'll subtract. Successful completion of the town hall project, and I just say under budget and on time. Successful negotiation of a three-year contract with our town administrator. Further development and improvement of the website. Establishing a public partner structure to bring some good to the downtown, downtown revitalization plan. Completing the medical marijuana host agreement that we talked about before. Constructing a responsible FY20, I think I counted right, budget that takes into account the peak period for down repayment. Completion of a project that starts and stops relative to our town financial and fiscal policies. Further development of our capital plan, making sure it's townwide, including the schools. And then completion of this school envelope project and the water treatment. So, I'm gonna go to my left, and could you give us a sense of yours?
Okay, I had, create IT plan for town hall to support efficient record handling, storage, and retrieval. To mechanize where possible, minimize the number of people needing to touch each document, and to maximize direct citizen retrieval where possible and cost effective. So that's an overall IT plan. Second one was to improve the functionality, content, and ease of use of the town website. The third was to support revitalization, the economic growth of downtown. Fourth was develop and maintain annually a five-year capital plan. Fifth was to align the goals and objectives across town departments and commissions, and ensure the support of town goals. The establishment of the elderly, and... The establishment of the elderly and veteran committees. Establish and implement a process to advertise and obtain volunteers for open board positions, to fill vacancies on a timely basis and maximize effectiveness of the boards. Create and implement policies and procedures for the rental of the downtown, or the town hall, meeting hall and great hall. And then I had a couple of miscellaneous ones concerning the two-day town meeting at Masco and calendar issues for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Item number one, I had review and approve the board of selectmen code of responsibility. Remove, review and approve the board of selectmen policies and procedures. Review and approve FY2018 through FY2022 capital improvement plan. Review and approve the financial management policy based on Collins Center study of 2017. Review and approve a visitor's code of conduct. Address certain details of the town administrator's contract. Conduct a proper performance review of the town administrator. Discuss the signed bylaw and its enforcement. And discuss the possibility of forming an official body to upgrade the town.
Would you say visitors' codes?
Yeah, what did you mean?
Aliens from far?
What's far?
Five is review and approve the visitor's code of conduct.
Can you explain the question?
Well, yeah, Kelly had put forth a letter like that a few months ago, and I think it came about because there were some people in here, in town hall, that were going nuts and threatening, you know. One of them said, "I should be shot," okay, for example. One of them came in and attacked Sue Winslow at one point in time, almost bodily. And as a result of that, she quit the job. And she moved down home because she couldn't take it anymore.
Funny you tell me that before I started. And that's why I'm here.
So that's why it gets largely left for you.
A couple of those things Kelly put together, this kind of thing.
So if we inserted the word town hall before the word visitors, that's why you're talking about visitors. Visitors, we didn't know what you meant.
Okay, I could have said town hall code of conduct.
I thought we were going to stop them out on route one. Give them a drive through here.
Have your own, it's a great name.
There are some issues with that, because even if we do it, how do we get it in the hands of the people that are supposed to read it?
Well, and there are, there can be expectations that help employees understand what's appropriate as a reaction. Because I think part of the issues have been getting caught between both sort of personal reaction, which can, people could be startled, and what am I legally allowed to do? What support do I have, and this is and that's. It was kind of an ad hoc fistful of different kinds of responses. And something that sort of said, listen, these are the expectations. We could post it somewhere, but I think it sets an expectation as much for those who are in town halls as it does for everyone.
It does speak to training of employees in town hall, although if you were to public, and giving them tools also to protect themselves, this is extremely important.
Agreed.
We did that in the old town hall, we had done a number of things. And they certainly had rules and procedures that they would go through where if something happened, things that they would say, et cetera, et cetera. So that is just an ongoing requirement of providing the tools and the training for the employees to know how to deal with the public when necessary.
Mr. Ginn, your topics, please.
Yes, so these are my goals, but there is an asterisk up here, and let me just start with that as a base of it. At the bottom, it says, "As always, goals are in addition to the board of selectmen's primary responsibility of providing effective operations of town government to serve the residents." In other words, it's an ongoing sort of thing that you have to put. The goal could be to run, the goal could be run the town well, okay? But that's a given. You understand what I'm saying? The goals in my mind are the things that are a push out to achieve something new, different, move us in a greater, better direction, one thing or another. At any rate, Michael, there are eleven of them that I have listed here. Achieve standard and force global long-term rating of triple A before the issuance of Topsfield's next municipal bonds. Real estate taxes, control increase in the real estate tax. This goes somewhat to the, and I see commonalities between our things, which is good. People talked about the budget for next year, making sure that more of that in there. This speaks to that, that we recognize that there are some additional costs coming in because of the debt. How are we going to try to manage our costs such that the taxes in the future are somewhat reasonable for the residents, so we don't drive people out of the town wholesale? Municipal data online. Improve the breadth and quality of municipal data that is available to the public online and reduce the number of open records requests. That's the reason for doing it, that's a major reason for doing it. But there are tools there, and I have suggestions in the write-up here as to what they might be. Four, looking at existing application software. Upgrade Amunis application software to current levels in order to exploit our, exploit our application software that will increase operational efficiency of town government. So in other words, there are some things that we're somewhat, we are behind. If we don't move by March, it's one of those things like Microsoft says they don't support you anymore. But it's certainly important to be up to date because we want to be supported, but more importantly, there are tools that are available in the upgraded software. It's like your phone, when you get an upgrade on the phone, they'll say, oh, I can do that with the phone now. The same sort of thing with Amunis software, is taking advantage of it. And then taking it on to the next one. Five is to look at, evaluate integrated applications available from our existing vendors that can improve the efficiency and quality of town government operations. In other words, we're not necessarily looking for whole new software tools or whatever. First, look at where we are and what we have to provide for integration. And I think somebody else, Lynn, you had that sort of thing in here, integration, IT plan that's well integrated. The sixth one is, again, another computer one, but this is one that we've been dealing with. Kelly, you came forward looking to Warren article to get some software to manage documents. Then we have this Boyd docs and related softwares that we've considered. This one simply says to establish an integrated strategy for storing and retrieving our electronic municipal documents and then implementing that strategy. And I have some suggested tools that are there. Then the village shopping center. Improve the appearance and safety of Topsfield's downtown village by renovating the streets and sidewalks and working with the residents of Topsfield Village Love who are developing a vision of the area. Remember, we asked them, they came to us and we said, please come back to us with your vision of what it might be. So that, and I think we, you have a good one there, Mark, where you're talking about doing a partnership private, and it says this is private, but I think you also meant business private perhaps, or whatever. But I think all of those sorts of things are, I think everybody has that item. One more on the, on the plan. Resident communications, implement a process to receive and track resident communications with town government. And I have a couple of comments as to what that is. But this is kind of a follow-up to, it was originally driven by the Topsfield Village recently, but it's something that Kelly and I certainly have talked about in past years. I remember Laura Powers and I and Kelly at one of the MMA's trying to, what tools are available so it could better allow residents to communicate with us. Signed bylaw, achieve compliance with enforcement of the town's signed bylaw. The old highway garage, establish a plan for the old highway garage structure. We've had some vandalism there, too, by the way. I mean, it's something we just, we can't keep doing it too long. We've had some vandalism there, it does need some work, some things with the shingles on the roof and that. So as you know, you can't, the building doesn't just exist. We need some sort of plans that, that's what I'm asking. And then the last one here is trees affecting utilities. Evaluate the threat posed by maturing trees to public utilities and work with utility companies to reduce those threats. I didn't plan to have the storm that came through an hour ago, but it might, no. Clearly working with utilities. There's certain things happening in our town that didn't exist 50 years ago. In a sense, there had been farms, it went away the turn of the century, perhaps, trees started to grow. We've got some of these large old pines, and they're along the roads and near the, so they're in people's houses too. People are trouble with their own properties. But the idea is that we have had some outages. Boxwood got even worse than we did, but that may have, that may have been because they had more trees than we have, or it was just the luck of the draw that the way certain winds came through and snow fell, that they had more problems than we did. But the point is, I think for long-term public safety, for those few times when it's terrible, meaning a blizzard or hurricane or whatever else, what things can we do to really help, to drive the utility to help us even to the point that maybe they say, okay, well, we'll take care of these, this and this, but you have to take care of that? And so maybe we need additional spending of Warren article to help, as a capital plan, to help improve the safety of our utilities. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Before I pass to Mr. Spencer, I noticed that Mr. Ginn had eleven, and you only have nine, so maybe you guys can work out a side of it.
Let me see, I will take number...
He has quality, he has quality in him.
Yeah, I'm good for quality, not funding, so that's right.
It's not, I had to take two of them.
I suppose the few of you picked a more insightful effort, looks like you put in. I focused, as you probably know me now, I focused on, although I don't disagree with a lot of the other things, projects not already underway or committed to. And I did not talk about things I consider annual tasks that are critically important, such as budget and so on and so forth. So I tried to, so these are sort of beyond what I would consider our normal necessary part of annual tasks. First is, because I think we need to do it for the very reasons we talked today, and it's not so much difficult as it is, it ought to get started. Work with the town administrator to set job goals and expectations for FY19. And that will ripple down throughout everything. Number two, review and revitalize downtown Topsfield. I have prepared a BOS resolution, I'll work with Mark there when we put it in, but I thought our goals would be a good place to get that established. And to possibly increase zoning, state support, I'm already looking into that. I've got some ideas on a downtown plan that extends quite a bit, but quite different than what other folks have been talking about, that might be doable. And basically, supporting the evolu, evolving coalition of business owners, property owners and citizens. That's Topsfield Village Love. Improve the town website functionality, I won't go through all of this, but it focuses on making it a tool citizens can use for communication, both ways, what's going on here and letting them know. We have to review links, because there's a lot of broken ones. We have to look for posted information, there's a lot of old stuff there. There's missing historic information that did not get converted over by the company and so on. Search figure, the search function is not very helpful. There are things you can search for that aren't there, but they are there. And you can't get them through the search function. And I've gone and tested a lot of these things. Access, there's a lot of things we can do in that. I think we need to distribute responsibility for updating different departments. And there's a model for fencing that is used at Masco very successfully. And that we need to define and assign the roles of webmaster. This is somebody who just makes sure that it's working technically. And the website data manager, this is the oversight, that stuff is up to date, people are getting minutes in and so on. Adopt a common reporting form, this is obviously related to the website improvement. I feel citizens should be able to fill something out online and submit it electronically as well as in paper if they so prefer. Appoint a town charter review committee and be thoughtful about outlining the scopes and so on. Main focus, I understand, is around, at this time, around whether we prefer to have a weak town administrator or a strong town administrator, but we should get that work underway. Job descriptions for all town hall employees. I'm a little concerned that there seem to be, when I've asked questions about who reports to who, I've gotten different kinds of answers sometime. I'd just like to see that laid out, because I think we need to pay attention to where lines of responsibility go. As I put it, characterize and clarify reporting relationships. Anywhere the buck stops should be marked with a, you know, a bright star or something or other. There has been a little bit of this, and I'm not blaming any individuals, I just don't think it's been made clear. The town function, which I think should be an ongoing town function, to be carried out by committee, appoint a citizen consultant some form to forecast our future capital spending and create a viewable and evolving capital planning document. My view is it should look out 10 years. We should be looking at things we might need. We can make a change, we can change the color of the ink it's in if we say this is 50% likely to happen versus 99% likely. We already have a bunch of capital projects we chat about, but nobody's ever put numbers on them or kind of put them into a view of where it's going to go in the future, other than maybe later. And there are a lot of possible things, if we go to start time changes. Masco may take unilateral action that will affect the school budget for start time, and we need to know what the bad news may be on that if that's the case. And there are other things, school performance improvements, infrastructure improvements and so on, possibles. And then, as I say, looking out through 2030, so that those of us, I think it's everybody who wants to have a long-term picture, we're not just looking two or three years out, but we're looking out beyond the bubble. We will have to spend some more money, but we don't want to go through a series of bubbles. Oh, it all looks really great, then we go through bubbles. Politically, that's tough, and I think it's frankly much tougher for taxpayers to deal with this than it is with at least as steady and expectable an evolution of costs as possible. I think we need to list and define, this speaks to Dick's point. I think we need to get much clearer on sort of what is already there. I don't think I would go get new stuff until we kind of know what are they being used for? Who owns it? And I put them as responsible for updates and so on, and for the functionality, and what links connect them to other things. I'm also concerned about security measures. Some of these things are in the cloud, and we're covered by the security of the company we contract with. But we've already heard of towns, and what would happen if somebody came along and said, we've locked all your records, we want $50,000? We might spend $50,000 trying to reconstruct them if we could, and we would lose everything for a month at a time. Would we just pay that? We want to avoid any possibility of that. Finally, and this is a broad one, but review all departments for potential synergies that might save time, resources and money. And this sort of comes as an outgrowth of my, looking, sort of value engineering in our processes and efficiencies, you know, everything from emergency services. I know there's been a lot of conversation on and off in the past, it's gone nowhere regarding, we have highway parks and rec, they have diggers and dump trucks and people who work. And the water departments, they have diggers and trucks and people who work. And parks and rec, and they have diggers and trucks and people who work. Are we most efficient by having three separate groups? So that's the kind of thing I'd like to take a look at. That's the high, to me, the low hanging fruit right there.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge that we received a suggested goal from Mr. Larson that relates to the implementation of Collins Center financial reports. And I think that's reflected elsewhere, so I think it's absolutely... I'm going to arbitrarily try something. Debbie, would you be kind, if you go for the whiteboard? I'm only continuing the discussion here, I'm not pressing it. These are just things that I think are in multiple places, just to get us started.
It's remarkable how many of the same things show up.
Yeah, so this is just my quick...
Which is encouraged.
That's good.
That's encouraged, I like that.
Went through five down the left and six through 10 down the right, do you retake? So starting with the number one?
Yep.
And again, these are not ranked. Downtown, you can just write downtown, meaning revitalization. Number two, financial policies, which involves, I'm a little hesitant to direct the goal at the Collins Center, but that's what we're talking about. Three, capital plan.
Capital plan?
Yeah. Four, website. I'm just trying to get succinct labels there.
Yep.
Five, you're right, TA contract.
That includes the goal setting and expectation.
Yeah.
Yep.
Six, I'm going to call it fiscal 20 town budget, but I'm not trying to limit it. I think there's lots of topics that were under that. And then I came up with this wording, but number seven, straight, town IT review. There's lots of stuff about that relates to that, I'm just trying to... Anybody, before we talk about crossing the offer there or whatever, even not ranked, but we have three open slots. We obviously can have 200 goals if you want, using the number 10 to get us management. Anybody have any other sort of repeated topics that they see?
I think we need to include charter review, because didn't the voters vote on that?
The only reason I'm not is, oh, I guess we could. It's absolutely on our agenda for today to set up that convention. for today to set up that committee, but it just goes to committee.
If it's just a setup of a committee, then in a sense, it doesn't need to be our priority, we're gonna, that falls under tax.
It would almost be next year.
I hear you, I hear you, yep.
How about the medical marijuana host agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I think that's gonna roll forward really steadily, and will be done in a month and a half.
So the goal is depleted.
Completed, I kept using the word successfully.
It's running the mechanics of it. How about the signed bylaw? That came up in a number of people. Certainly the citizens have made that a sure.
Signed bylaw?
We gotta figure out a way to get some enforcement to keep that, that thing, that's the problem.
I've got some ideas on that. I've got some ideas on that.
Yeah, for this, just preliminary step, we've got an open slot. Anybody see something else that's repeated?
Need to.
No, we don't, we can have two.
Nine was a great number, if you notice on nine.
Ted Williams.
There were a couple of things that related to residents and forms, communications, whatever else, that may come under IT.
I think it's under website.
Or the website.
Yeah, the website, I think is the way, yeah.
I love the one about the potential synergies. And one of the problems that we have with the tax rate is that we don't do zero-based budgeting. We base it on what it was the prior year, and it's some increase forever after. So unless you change the original basis on which the taxes are going forward, you're not really going to be able to reduce the rate of growth too significantly. So looking at this potential synergies across departments, I think is an important one to see what we could do to get the base rate down.
And could we maybe put two words together, synergies and outsourcing, or and or outsourcing? Because in some cases, maybe two things come together, but this piece of these two goes out, that sort of thing.
I think that's, I just think that's on the next little detail again, there's gonna be objectives sometime up here and, to me, I wouldn't put that as, also, I have nothing against the word synergies, but I'm just not sure it's the, I have no problem with the topic up here, but that's.
How about efficiencies?
Yeah, there you go.
Efficiencies, and I would say efficiencies to include, and I would definitely support the idea of, the option of outsourcing perhaps should be considered.
Yeah.
But that would be part of that, but I would say.
Yeah, because that's the only one up there getting at the tax rate.
Yeah, I would say process and functional efficiencies.
So what about town government efficiencies, you can abbreviate them.
Our town, yeah, our town management efficiencies.
Town management.
Town management efficiencies.
Town management?
There you can just like MG, MT.
Operation.
Or other.
Operational, oh, I like that.
Town operations.
Town operational efficiencies. Yeah, that's right.
You got an eraser, I see it right there.
Efficiencies?
Yep.
Now, are these our, is this the board of selectmen goals, or are these the town administrator goals?
I'll tell you exactly what they are. That's why.
Good question. I think they're.
Give me a minute, because I think, at least my intent is that question is answered. And that's why I took the time at the beginning, that we're trying to actually do what we're obligated to do this year. So they are the goals and objectives which we, the board, determine necessary for the proper operation of the town and the attainment of the board's policy objectives.
These are not policy objectives, Brian.
No, these are the goals to support the policy objectives. What are our policy objectives, are those?
We haven't got those specifically at this point.
Oh, they change year to year, those are?
They change minute to minute, but, you know, I want to, I just, I want to hold it with, we're doing really good process-wise, we have somewhat limited time, I want to accomplish something. This has to go somewhere else, it has to have fancier titles, it has to have objectives, it has to have all that. So let me hold us just to this level for a moment, then.
Can I speak to Lynn's question about, and I have, the relationship as I see it is, these in my view would become town priorities as expressed by the board of selectmen. For each of those and possibly other things, in conversation with Kelly, we would, my little grid is ongoing responsibilities, the daily stuff, and then projects, some of these would be projects. For each one of those, we define outcomes, attainable, some of them be stretch goals, the necessary resources, because we as managers are responsible for seeing that the resources to do them are there, timeline and milestones so that we can march along the way and do that, and metrics and measurement. That becomes Kelly's playbook as the town administrator, but the larger picture here is what do we want the town, because.